Underwriting is provided by Sonoma Paint Center located at 815 West Napa Street. For more information you can go to sonomapaintcenter.com and Larbrey Automotive located at 181-55-SONOMA-HIWAY. For more information you can go to larbreyauto.com.
I would like to call to order the, what is today's date, October 23rd, 2017, regular meeting of the Sonoma City Council. Before we started, I just wanted to say a few words. It's been three weeks since our last regular meeting. And I'd also like to note that the IT is updating their photos of the council today. But it's been three weeks and now that we get back together, it seems like we're in a slightly different world. And for the, even though you, all of you know this, for the sake of posterity, I just wanted to note that in the late hours of October 8th and early hours of October 9th, we had wildfires erupt in the hills near the city. And over the last, next 11 days, thousands of people would be evacuated from their homes. We activated our EOC here at the police station. The next day, it would operate 24 hours a day for, I think, maybe 11 days. And during that time, in Sonoma County alone, almost 7,000 structures were burned, 23 people lost their lives. And our local first responders, both of our chiefs who are present today, came to our aid and were joined by first responders from all over the country and even other countries as they battled the wildfires. And my thought coming out of these last two weeks, which it just seems like every day feels a little bit different, and you're trying to figure out how you feel about everything. But, you know, we always knew that the valley and the city were connected, but I don't think we've seen it more as we did in the way that we responded and we realized that the only way that we were going to get out of this was to work together. And so I just wanted to make the note that for the next couple of weeks, couple of months, even couple of years, that that is how we are going to be moving forward together. And later tonight, we're going to have our first official discussion about what's going to happen moving forward after the fires. But it's just the first of many, so whatever isn't discussed today, there will be many discussions in the future. So on that, Chief Aker, would you please do us the honor of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? All please rise.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Chief. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Aggermonte.
Here.
Mayor Hunley.
Here. At this time, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
She'll move.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte.
Aye.
Mayor Hunley.
Aye. Item number one is comments from the public. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Under state law, unless otherwise permitted under the Ralph M. Brown Act, the merits of the matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the city council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time that item comes up for council consideration. Upon being acknowledged by the mayor, please step to the podium and speak into the microphone. Begin by stating and spelling your name. Anybody? Ms. Schultz.
Thank you. Patricia Schultz, S-H-U-L-T-S. I live at 6D Mallay here in Sonoma. Mayor and council, I'm here for a couple of reasons. First of all, to express my amazing wonderment at how this community has come together. These people, for the last several days, have really taken care of us. And now that we have seen the other side of it, I just wanted to give you a little update what the chamber has been focusing on. We have been out, our team has been out and visited with about 120 businesses in the last few days, not only around the plaza, but the shopping centers. And today, we went out into the springs, visited with business owners just to assure them that we're here for them, provide them with a list of resources, and try and make the connections that are going to get them through the mid and the long term. And what we're hearing is obviously concern about loss of business. We're hearing "thank you," we're hearing the gratitude, the expression of community and neighbor, and that we're in it together. So, again, people are concerned about loss of business, retaining employees, of course, housing, of course, of course. To address some of those issues, we're pulling together a meeting on Wednesday for our employers to talk about how to help the workforce right now. So, we hear that there are some that are going to need to do some layoffs. We hear from other businesses that they need to hire. So, we're going to bring those folks together. We've got the Workforce Investment Board from the county coming down to talk about how to best provide resources for employees. Working closely with the Small Business Association, I went out to the local assistance center today at Hannah, super impressive, very tightly run. And I would encourage any of you to let businesses know that if they think they're going to need assistance of any kind, they should register with FEMA. There's no obligation, but you should register to be able to enact those services. Talk with your bank, and then talk with SBA lending. And I guess I really just wanted to make it abundantly clear that we are here to help. We've got all the resources that we can curate on our website, and we're available for any meeting with any person at any time. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Hunley and council members. I think first, I would like to thank first responders also who basically saved our city. I mean, the city could have gone up in flames so easily, so we are very grateful and feel very fortunate. Then, my first question, I'm not sure if it's for city staff or the city council, but it is, why is the moratorium on wine bars not on the agenda tonight? I would like someone to be able to answer that for me.
After a public comment, I'll get an answer to that for you.
Okay. Thank you. Because while this was taken off the agenda because we were promised it would be on for October 23rd, something frivolous was put on, like this bike marathon, which I think nobody in the community right now, or run, I guess it's not bikes, it's running, but whatever it is, it's not something that's of prime concern to people in the valley after this fire right now. I think this is something that I'd like to see the council vote against hosting it this year in, or next year in Sonoma. I think we also might look at maybe having a forum, not only on the moratorium about wine bars, but also a discussion about disaster preparedness in the town of Sonoma and how we want to look at this going forward. Because in many ways, we aren't prepared for the kind of fire and the kinds of disaster that just happened. What do we need to do as a community to be ready the next time something this disastrous happens? And to get the word to people as soon as we can, I think most of us found that we were updated by Facebook more than anywhere else. And what can we do to be more in contact with each other if something like this happens again? And what are, this to me is, the fire being the disaster it was, also is, it kind of pressed a pause button in Sonoma. It's like, what do we really value here? What are our priorities? What do we want to do for the community, for the workers in the community who can't afford housing to live here? Do we really want to promote more tourism now, or do we want to help people in the community? So, I think those are questions we need to ask, and I think we need to ask the community how they feel and not just have decisions made for them. So, I'd like to suggest another meeting for the people in Sonoma to talk about where we want our community to go from here. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment at this time? Yes.
My name is Dominic Tomasi, T-O-M-M-A-S-I. I am a senior at Sonoma Valley High School, and I'm the student voice. I'm here on part of the school today just to inform the city about how we are going to move forward with our homecoming and how the school's moving forward after this disaster. We talked today in our first period leadership class as to how we're going to make sure that as a school, we can be there for our students. We have a room open, a disaster kind of counselor room. There are dogs on campus, the service dogs that can help people who are feeling down. A teacher brought in her pet tortoise today, so there are students who have been affected greatly by this fire with their houses burning or any sort of thing that happened. There's support going on with counselors in numerous ways that we as students can help other students on campus, we're discussing today. And also about the homecoming events that have been going on. As tradition goes, we usually do the parade and the homecoming football game, but since the fire happened during the week that was originally planned, we've moved that. All those festivities will be happening the week of October 30th to November 4th. And we discussed today how we really want to include first responders in the celebration and a big thank you to all the first responders there. So, we're reaching out through our school officer on campus to see how we can connect with all the leaders of those first responder groups and make sure that they're at the game and at the rallies, and so we can give a big heartfelt thank you. And that's how we're going to be moving forward with our tradition, and we invite as many people from the city to enjoy a huge celebration as we're a town that came together in a time of crisis and we can celebrate something so amazing like this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I live in Santa Rosa. As you know, I go to church in Sonoma. I just wanted to give a couple of anecdotes. Santa Rosa lost a lot of housing, and I went into the cleaners this afternoon and talked to Mr. Yu, the fellow who owns it, and I said, "Well, your shop survived the fire." And he says, "Yes, but my house didn't." And he's staying with his in-laws in Roanoke Park and thinking of moving away because he's not sure he's going to be able to rebuild. It'd be a big loss to our local community in Santa Rosa. I myself, but for the direction of the wind, would be either looking at embers or an ember myself, so I, I'm taking this seriously. I had a note tonight from Tom Conlon, who you know from here in town, saying that Village Green One has changed owners and that his friend there is moving out because the rent has gone up from $1,200 a month to $1,700 a month, a 42% increase. That's what I have to offer. Thank you.
Is there any further public comment at this time? Seeing none, I will bring it back. Do we have any meeting dedications tonight?
Mayor Hunley, maybe before we do that, can I just answer a few questions that came out of the public comment? So, as the community is aware, staff has been focused, you know, for the last couple of weeks on responding to the fires and then moving towards some issues that have risen out of the recovery. In terms of the moratorium, there are a lot of things that were scheduled that have been kind of just pushed out, and council will have to have a conversation about where we are now and are, based on what was on your plate for the next 90 days. Are there any of those things that you do want to, what do you want to continue? Anything you want to postpone? Anything you want to stop doing? That's a conversation that I think you may want to do. So, in terms of the tasting rooms, obviously, at this point, it was, this is a staff capacity issue. We haven't been able to pick up regular work yet and to look at anything, but there will be that opportunity, I think, for council to give us direction about what you want to do in terms of initiatives that were in motion or teed up to occur in the next few months. The reason the item on the destination races is on is they need to open up their registration timing, and that needs to happen shortly, and that's why that is on before you. And it was all done and ready before the fires, the staff report was done before the fires occurred. And then, I think that's kind of it for those, just a brief response to some questions.
Thank you. Coming back to dedications, any? I would like to dedicate this meeting to the 23 people in Sonoma County that lost their lives and also to all of those in Sonoma Valley and beyond that lost their homes in the last two weeks.
And I would just like to add to all the STC clients who got to move twice this past week, and a lot of us were involved in the physical movement of that and all of the staffers that took care of them. And we tried to take care of them as best we could as well, and the Rotary Club out in Dixon who took them on when they left here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Item number 3.1, it is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Do I have somebody that will be receiving this proclamation tonight?
We heard them.
Well, I will give it nonetheless, but I have to go get it. Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2017. Whereas the city of Sonoma recognizes that domestic violence affects one in four families in our local community and that the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, and security based on the systematic use of emotional, physical, sexual, psychological, and economic control or abuse. And whereas the YWCA Sonoma County is a community-based, not-for-profit organization affiliated with the YWCA USA, YWCA Sonoma County embodies its mission to empower, educate, and advocate for domestic violence survivors and their children who find they're unsafe in their homes. YWCA Sonoma County operates in our community's only confidential safe house shelter, the only 24/7 domestic violence crisis hotline, and the only therapeutic preschool serving one of our most vulnerable populations, children aged three to five years old. And whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, sexes, ages, sexual orientations, and income levels, stopping the cycle of vicious criminal assault in the home requires a coordinated effort between the criminal justice system and the agencies that provide services to victims primarily reliant on the strong resolve and immense courage of survivors. And whereas only a collaborative community effort will put an end to the cycle of domestic violence, members of our community are encouraged to participate in YWCA's scheduled events and programs to support their mission to eliminate domestic violence in Sonoma County through awareness, education, and empowerment. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Rachel Hunley, Mayor of the City of Sonoma, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim October 2017 in Sonoma as Domestic Violence Item number four is the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Item 4.1, I guess, what's that? Are there any questions from the council or items to be removed? Seeing none, I will take it out to the public for public comments. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Mr. Cook.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 4.1.
I'll second that.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington.
Aye.
Councilmember Aggermonte.
Aye.
Mayor Hunley.
Aye. Item 5.1 has been, it's a continued public hearing. We will be continuing it till November 6th, 2017. Item 6.1, update discussion and actions on October fire emergency, including council action on... Do I really need to just read all these?
No, we'll go through them. Thank you.
Many things to talk about tonight.
Good evening, council and community. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to basically give you a brief update about some things that, where we're headed coming right out of the fire. I think it's important to note that both the county sheriff, our police department, and fire staff have still been working long hours, even though the city closed its emergency operations center last Tuesday. First responders have been continuing to work on repopulation efforts in the county and doing a variety of kind of mop-up activities and can still doing fire containment, and I'll let the professionals speak to that more specifically. The county EOC is still in operation as well. And as staff, city staff, we are gathering information, researching, and some information is still not available. But I felt like as we looked at where we're going, it was a time to talk about some of the financial pieces, get some pieces in place potentially there, and also talk to the council about having council members involved in some subcommittees or liaisons' role for the next, say, 90 days as we feel our way through the next steps from this fire disaster. And as we move forward, it may be helpful for the council to have kind of a study session to meet and talk in more detail about some of these topics, but we'll wait and see how that evolves, and I'll work with the mayor if that's something that seems appropriate. As, I think, as the community well knows, we as a city were very fortunate and we're very thankful for the first responders and what was done. I'm not going to go through the history of what occurred for the first eight days. We've not, there are many thank yous, there's details put together, and again, our chiefs who are here present have still been actively dealing with the current fire emergency and so that we've not had time to put that together. There are also a lot of folks to thank you and great appreciation for how this community came together and supported everyone. And just a few brief things, as council knows, we did open our emergency operations center. We worked closely with the rest of the fire districts and with Chief Sackett, who was in charge of law enforcement in the county. There were, as Vice Mayor Edwards says, the Sonoma Development Center was moved on the first day, evacuated, and we housed those residents and their staff and doctors, et cetera, for two nights before they were evacuated again to Dixon. There was also a general evacuation center opened at the high school, which ran for about eight days. The city has had an agreement for quite some time with the community center that if an emergency occurs and we need volunteers, the Sonoma Community Center is in charge of bringing, helping us bring those volunteers. Those were one of the first calls on Monday, and so very appreciative of the work the Sonoma Community Center did. Sonoma Unified School District and the high school, in terms of the housing they did for individuals at the evacuation center and the shelter, truly heroic work done there. And anything we asked of the school district, whether it was buses to help move people during evacuation or helping stand up the town hall, they immediately were there. So, there's, vets also helped a lot, taking care of the Vets Memorial Center. Those are just some big thank yous. There's lots and lots. So, I'm not going to go into any more detail because I don't want to forget some really key partners. I would like to, I have a variety of things to kind of walk through with you, but before I go through some details, I'd like to ask first, ask Chief Aker to give just a brief update about where we are now, and also Chief Sackett to do a brief update, and then we'll go through some of the rest of the items that were laid out in the staff report.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, members of the community present and watching on TV. Thank you very much for the opportunity to provide you with what I hope is a brief but meaningful update on our current situation with the fires and what we can look forward to over the next few days. So, the update as of this morning, the fire, the Nuns Fire, which is the merger of the four fires that were directly affecting the valley here, is 90% contained. It has burned a total of 56,556 acres, and we are expecting full containment by Friday. There have been 23, as Mayor Hunley mentioned, there's been 23 civilian fatalities throughout the Sonoma County to date, and there have been over 6,700 structures destroyed. And that's on all of the fires. Unfortunately, I don't have specific numbers yet on the Nuns Fire and how many structures were destroyed or damaged just on that incident itself. Couple other items related to the fire. First of all, we unfortunately are going to experience an additional period here, starting today through the next couple of days, of some additional hot, dry, and windy weather. We would encourage and urge everybody to be as safe and responsible as they possibly can. We are continuing to hold resources here in the county, both to continue the mop-up efforts and rehabilitation efforts on the fires in Sonoma County, but also to be prepared in case another one, these wind events, produce more fires. As well on the incident, as I hope most people are aware, CAL FIRE Incident Management Team One has been managing all of the fires here in Sonoma County, very expertly, I may add. They will be transitioning out of this role by Friday after full containment is achieved, and they'll be transitioning back to local CAL FIRE unit as well as the county EOC. Like to also advise all the residents within the valley, city and valley, that we're still working hard out there. There's a lot of fire crews still patrolling and working on hotspots within the burn. There's an awful lot of utility crews out there trying to restore power and various utility infrastructure. County Roads is out there working on roads. We're falling trees that are hazardous. So, we just urge people to have a little, have a little bit of patience with us as we're continuing that work and to really be aware, especially in the areas that are heavily affected by the fire, that this work will continue and to drive cautiously. I know there's a lot to look at, but we want to make sure that everybody stays safe through the next period of this process. Next thing, and I know Chief Sackett's going to go into a little bit more detail on this, but the evacuation orders have been lifted for Sonoma Valley. Residents are able to get back to their homes. There are some areas that have limited access, and you need to be a resident to get back into those areas, and those areas are the ones that are the most heavily affected by the fire. So, we've begun the difficult process of recovery, and especially for those of us in the community who have lost their homes, they're starting to return. And as part of the incident, part of our community, we're doing everything we can to assist them in this process. We have return kits that are available for folks, so they're not exposed to the hazards when they start going home and trying to dig through their property. These were available at the Glen Ellen Fire Station over the weekend and are now currently available at the Kenwood Fire Station, as well as at the southern intersection of Arnold and Dunbar Roads. The American, I toured this area this morning, the American Red Cross and FEMA are on the ground, touring those areas, providing support for the residents that are returning to those really heavily affected areas. There's also a local assistance center at Hannah Boy Center. Just want to remind everyone, as the chamber mentioned, that anybody affected by the fires, there is that local resource. Please get registered. As a community, I encourage and know that we will continue to support all who have been affected by these fires, and it's going to be a longer road. The immediate threat is over, but the long road continues, and I know we'll continue to show that support. Briefly, I would also like to take advantage of this opportunity and provide a thank you, a few thank yous. Again, not in detail because I don't want to miss anybody either, but it, the amount of support and the people to thank are just too long to list, but I want to, I do want to send some thank yous. First of all, to all the first responders who came to assist us from both within our county, neighboring counties... county, neighboring counties and from neighboring states, et cetera. We couldn't have done this without them and are, we appreciate all of their efforts and their travels so very much. I also want to acknowledge the extraordinary efforts of your local fire departments. The amount of extraordinary work done in the most difficult of circumstances by your local firefighters, many of whom are members of this community as well. It was incredible and from all of the local fire departments, Kenwood, Maya Comas, Eldridge, Sonoma Valley, Shell Vista. It's a true testament to the dedication and the commitment of those people, but also our collective efforts as a fire service to work together. We work together seamlessly and as devastating as these fires were, there were a lot of homes that were saved and that's something that I know that we're proud of and want to recognize as well. Lastly, on behalf of all the first responders, I want to extend the most heartfelt thank you to the entire community. The generosity and support are, have been truly overwhelming and have been felt by everyone. From the food support to the signs, to the thank yous, to the smiles and waves and hugs, all of them, all of them have meant something to us and we appreciate it. It lifts us up when we're trying to do that difficult work and we couldn't do it without you. I've been able to receive a number of comments and compliments from, again, first responders near and far who do this for a living, that have made the comment of what an extraordinary community we have and they've never experienced the outpouring of support like they have here in Sonoma. So that's something else that, you know, I'm truly very proud of as a member of the community and I want to share with the rest of the community. So with that, that concludes my update and available for any questions when that time is appropriate.
Thank you.
Mayor Hunley and members of the council and certainly to the greater Sonoma community. Many of the things I want to say, Chief Aker has already kind of pointed out, so I will just highlight a couple of the things that we've been doing. First and foremost, I could not be more thrilled with the cooperation that I saw occurring between the local fire department, the local first responders and our mutual aid friends, both in law and fire. It was, I've said this several times, when you would get in rooms dealing with such magnitude of problems, I never saw any egos, I never saw any bickering. I really saw people just focused together on trying to make this a successful outcome for everybody. And so I was thrilled to be a part of that, I really was. And I thank Steve for preparing his troops for that kind of an incident. For the last several days, we've been working tirelessly on repopulation efforts. And so I want to explain a little bit about where we are in that process because that's really about getting people back into their homes. It is, I've discovered, almost more complicated getting people back in their homes than it was getting them out of their homes in an evacuation order. But what we were able to do is, as you saw, we were able to release the eastern part of, well, first of all, the city of Sonoma, the evacuation orders lifted immediately and it was a voluntary evacuation anyway. So the city kind of repopulated by itself. And we saw people down in the plaza enjoying what is so great about Sonoma, walking around the shops downtown. And so we really kind of began to focus on the greater Sonoma Valley, starting for us in the eastern part, trying to get people back into Garrickie and to Castle and Newcastle, Old Winery Road, parts of Level Valley. And so really kind of getting them back in. And for the most part, it went fairly smooth. There were some areas that had some, you know, significant damage and so there was a lot of utility work and PG&E work and Comcast and a lot of utility vehicles working as well as the fire department still doing some mop up. So the kind of the real big populations that we started working was in Glen Allen. Glen Allen was a tough little community in terms of the fact that the way it was kind of bifurcated. There was, you know, a bunch of people who had never experienced any damage and they hadn't lost any property, but yet they were with, kind of contained within the fire zone. And so it was hard to get them populated as quickly as we liked. It became a high priority for us, a high priority for the county EOC. And eventually we were able to kind of carve out the places that were unaffected to get them back as quick as we can. I'm happy to say that we just completed the second day of the repopulation efforts in Glen Allen. So as of tomorrow morning at 6:00 AM, Glen Allen will be back to normal for everybody in terms of coming and going, no checkpoints. There'll be no sign of National Guard there or anybody else. And so that's been the first success. Yesterday, we also opened up portions of the eastern Maya Coma range. So Trinity was opened, Cavedale was open and those kind of things. And then today, we finally got the north part of the valley open, which included places like Pythian Road, Adobe Canyon and so on and so forth. So the process for repopulation is, there's an entire team that's kind of focused on that. And so everybody who's in the affected area, it becomes restricted to them only. And part of that has to do with hazards, part of that has to do with giving them appropriate equipment, but a lot of it has to do with just giving them the dignity to go to their place first before everybody else gets up there to just check it out. And so we close it off, we have a process for which they come through, they show their identification, they, or some type of proof that they have some reason to be up there and they get a little pass. And they get a little kit that has a mask and some gloves and some booties and some instruction about how to kind of protect themselves from hazards. They give a whole bunch of paperwork about things that, how they can mitigate self, health and safety issues for them. And then they get that little pass and off they go. So people began to repopulate those areas. Glen Allen was heavily hit and so it was quite emotional for people. We had a Red Cross Mental Health Department down there, we had the county Department of Mental Health down there just being available to anybody who may, who may need it. And as, you know, Steve had said, it was, one of the most touching parts for me was to come around the corner and see people who had gone back into their home, all wearing their protective gear, sifting for whatever thing they could find that was sentimental, whether of value or just sentimental value. But I saw numerous law enforcement officers from different communities embracing these people and it was just pretty touching. You know, you think people from Venetia or Oakland or San Francisco or Alameda County, but just that human side of law enforcement. And so it was very touching and so something I will remember for quite some time. So as we move forward, we plan tomorrow to open up for good the areas of Cavedale and Trinity in that area. And then finally, on Wednesday morning, and my days are running together, but Wednesday morning will be our final push at the Pythian Road, Nuns Canyon or Adobe Canyon and it'll be back to normal. So we have since pulled most of our law enforcement resources back. They have returned to their home agencies and we do have National Guard units that are still helping us out for the next couple of days. CHP locally, the CHP, the Napa Office and San Rose Office, as well as the Sheriff's Department has beefed up, you know, patrol just internally to make sure that people still feel safe and comfortable and we're going to continue that through the week for sure. But eventually we got to get our guys some time off. And I think it's going as well as it can. We certainly have a lot more people being thankful than they are being angry. And I cannot express my gratitude to this community for the way that they have been flexible. And I've asked them to reach down deep for that little bit of patience they have left and they really have done that. And you talk to the mutual aid agencies and they are just so thrilled with this community and the way it responded and the food that was provided and the gifts that were provided and just the thanks and the honks and the signs. I mean, it's just really a great sign of support. So I don't think this was the intent, Johnny, but talk about a great marketing campaign for law enforcement, you're going to have every one of those cops back up here this summer with their wives and husbands and, you know, children enjoying it. So heartfelt thank goes out to everybody. We really certainly could have done it without us. It was a huge operation. We learned a lot. We didn't always get it right, but we certainly tried to fix it if we didn't get it right and that really was, I think, was the goal for that. So that kind of concludes my report. The rest is about the fire update you got from Steve, so I'd be here to answer any questions if that would be appropriate.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you. So I also just want to say thank you to the hard work of the city staff and folks we had that came in and helped in the emergency operations center. We opened the emergency operations center to help coordinate activity and information and support law and fire. And we ended up serving some of that broader than just our city limits because of the need to support the county and what was happening in the valley. So I just want to say thank you to a number of key staff that worked, you know, almost 24/7. We had coverage. We also had public works field staff. We always had two people on the water crew to make sure that the tanks up in Thornsberry, the tanks were still going and generators and there was a lot of work there. There were some things, issues that had to be worked through, but they worked those through and we never had any, any problems with making sure that there was water provided and to our first responders. So there's more details, but that's really for a broader debrief. And I think, you know, as both, as Chief Sackett said, you know, there's things we all learned through this experience and there will be debriefs and we will do improvements and we'll put new systems, et cetera, in place. But based on what we faced, I am very proud of the, kind of the work of the staff and what was done and will continue to try to improve moving forward. So back to kind of some pieces within the staff report, there are two actions in front of council. The first, their first two really relate to funding. And so just some context here, this is really kind of going to be an evolving issue for us. So the primary costs that the city will have out of this is going to be related to our city staff overtime. It's going to be related to fire and police overtime related to the city portion. And then I think what we're going to be trying to do is the evacuation centers that were open, both for the, for the development center and for the general population. Again, when those opened, it was primarily serving county residents at the time. We did not have mandatory evacuations on the first Monday. So we'll be working with the county to figure out how those costs get picked up, whether that gets funneled through the county or through the city. Again, since the county has still been actively in their EOC, they've just started to send some, they just sent information out today asking for us to compile some of those costs. So some of that still is in process. So the action that, there's two resolutions for council to consider tonight. Within our basic budget, there is not any, enough flexibility or capacity to absorb any increased costs. So really as a placeholder, there's two resolutions. One is to take about, set aside $500,000 in what's called a disaster response fund. And this would be for overtime, water costs, anything else that are directly related to the city costs of expenditures. Again, I don't know whether we are going to need to cover costs on the interim for any of the evacuation centers or if we'll be able to fund those through the county. Those are still to be determined and that's why the number is a little higher. In terms of, again, the city, and then the other was, the other resolution really asked council to look at maybe a disaster recovery fund, pulling about $100,000 aside to assist with maybe any costs associated with some kind of a civic ceremony, gratitude, those types of things that we want, may want to do as a community. Also, there is going to be a heightened need for public information, has been for the last two weeks and will going forward. So some additional funding there. Just for some context, the city does have an emergency reserve of $2.8 million. The purpose of that reserve, it's 17% of our general fund revenues, non-discretionary, or sorry discretionary funds. And so of that, so basically that 2.8 sits there for a local disaster or catastrophe for exactly this purpose. So what the request of staff and if you want to do this now, we're just trying to set up a system where we set up a fund, move some funds over for disaster response, up to $500,000. I don't want to just be tapping the emergency reserve without some kind of ceiling, for lack of a better word, and then putting some funding aside to work on some just increased costs over the next few months that may be related to the recovery. So that is one of the items that was discussed in the staff report. Another item is really to ask council for some involvement and assistance to work on some subcommittees. As, over the last week, as we're hearing things from the community, I'm really seeing kind of, for lack of a better term, five areas or buckets of activity. One is in appreciation and gratitude and recognition and there is clearly a city role here to look at some kind of a civic event, to say thank you to those first responding agencies that came to assist, to do any other type of recognition that the council wants to do on behalf of the community. I believe that a subcommittee of two council members working there with potentially our events person or other key staff would be very helpful. So that is a kind of a subcommittee role because I see that we have a lead role there. As council's full aware, there's a lot out there on fundraising, all kinds of different folks coming forward, trying to bring, bring funding to, and to assist. I don't see this as a lead role for us, but I do see that potentially if council wants to play some kind of a support role or at least understand what's happening in that group of activities, the council may want to assign a liaison, kind of one person to be involved there. The third place is an area really focused on tourism, business to support the economy. We have there, I believe that that, while the city was, you know, not directly impacted, clearly we, the valley and the wine industry is, and current local businesses will have some impacts. We were lucky to lose no wineries in the Sonoma Valley, but they're looking forward. I know the Visitors Bureau has been working closely with both the chamber inventors and growers and so that could be another place where there could be a subcommittee just to do coordination and communication with staff in those groups. So that appears to be, for me, to be a place where there could be a city lead role. There's another area of activity where I've just heard about and if not, we've, staff, I know our public works director is starting to hear some of these conversations, but when we look at the environment, these are things outside our jurisdiction, but, you know, the parks that were damaged in the valley, the ag, the open space erosion management, the overall environment. Again, there is not a direct responsibility for the city in that area, but we, the council may, if you want to have a liaison that is kind of providing information or following those issues, that could be a role for the council and it's really a support role to the valley and the county. And then the last area is really in housing, both kind of short term and long term. I know the board supervisors has a meeting tomorrow where they have quite a bit on their agenda to talk about immediate actions related to housing. Clearly as a city, you know, there are some limitations that we have in the area of housing. We don't have some of the funding, we're not the successor agency on housing with the removal redevelopment. That was changed and sent to the county. But there are some projects, housing projects that are already kind of going through the planning process as well. So this, I think, really is a place for council to decide. There clearly is a role for whatever we're doing with housing here within our jurisdiction and in that place, there could be a subcommittee assignment if you want. And then there's also what's happening in the valley and broader in the county and maybe there, the other option is just to have a liaison. But there are, there's definitely a lot of activity and I think it would be helpful to have council's insight, voice and work in some of these areas. Another item in the staff report talks about in the emergency proclamation. On October 9th, we opened the emergency operations center and on October 11th, as the EOC director, I issued a proclamation of emergency. We closed the emergency operations center at noon on the 17th, but police and fire, we're still actively involved in responses. And then on the 17th, also the council ratified that emergency proclamation. It continues for 30 days unless council removes it and our city attorney, Jeff Walters, can speak more to that. The law does talk about when you don't need it anymore to close it down as soon as possible. And at the time we wrote the staff report and that all went out on Friday, we still had mutual aid. That is one of the things that's covered under the proclamation. And so I think that is a place that I've learned as of this afternoon and Chief Sackett can speak to this if need be, that at this point, mutual aid other than National Guard and CHP has stopped. Again, most of that at this point is, I believe, back out in the county, not in the city. But I think the mutual aid is one of the key reasons to keep the proclamation at this point, based on what At this point, based on what we knew as of Friday, our recommendation was to keep it moving until November 6th. However, if council wanted to take action tonight to lift it, on a four-fish vote, you could add it to the engine, agenda and do so. Just a few other items. The county has also just put out, I think, this morning, time's kind of blurring, so maybe it was yesterday, a new website called SonomaCountyRecovers.org. It is a site that really provides, it's the official information for things that people will need, especially if you are directly impacted by the fire. So, it would suggest, if folks haven't looked at that, it's SonomaCountyRecovers.org. The group, the group of county folks that put that together actually worked with the same vendor that we've been working with for the past two months to try to put a new city website together. So, you'll see they have a similar kind of look and feel and appreciate proud city support and the work they came through to work with the county really quickly on this. In terms of our own website, we have been working for the last two months to put a new website in place. When the fires hit, it was not a tool that was available to us, so we used the tool we have, which was our Facebook page. As we worked through the, worked through the week, we got to a point where we shifted some resources and basically launched our site early. So, we have a tool that we think will be better for the community during this time. It's not all there. There's still some pieces, lots of, some things we want to add, but there is a fire recovery page and some places that we'll just be linking back to county resources. And then, if there is local news, we'll put that up as well. And that's just our website, www.sonomacity.org. We, it was released on last Thursday. We had some issues kind of getting it to populate, but at this point, I think that those technical issues are up. So, again, the actions in front of council for tonight to consider is adopting a resolution to appropriate $500,000 from emergency reserve into a disaster response fund and to pay for those direct costs that came out of the fire. To adopt a resolution appropriating $100,000 for kind of disaster recovery that could be there for things that we need like public information, civic events, and other things that may come forward. Also, if the staff, I mean, if council has any direction on community appreciation or gratitude efforts, maybe discuss that a little bit, too. Consider the assignment for council on any subcommittees or liaison role. Again, if council wants to look at the emergency declaration, we can talk through that as well, and any other direction the council wants to give us tonight. So, I appreciate the efforts and the work of the council during this emergency as well. And happy to answer any questions.
All right. So, we've a lot to talk about. So, at this time, we're just going to do questions only about the things that we just heard, and then when we come back for discussion, we're going to do it in pieces. So, at this time, who has questions? Ms. Harrington?
I have a question. Thanks. I have a question about page 46 of the staff report, and I just want to clarify something. We discussed the cost that the city of Sonoma would be responsible for, and it was my recollection that you said that we were not responsible for the cost of mutual aid, and I see that here that that's listed as a cost. So, can you clarify that?
You know, I'm going to ask either Chief Steve Aker, if maybe he can respond partly on the costs. So, some of these costs would be borne back by FEMA and those things, as I understand. I've listed here is it's a cost of the, of the item of the fire, and that's one of the clarifications that we are still waiting to get, to talk directly to the county about how that will work. And I know, Stephen, you definitely work mutual aid a lot in different situations. If you have any update of how this generally works.
Generally speaking, on, on an incident this big, all of the fire response will be reimbursed. It will be covered by CAL FIRE, CAL OES, and then potentially through, through federal funding as well. So, from the fire side of things, there shouldn't be any, any real costs for us. Sometimes, there's an initial operating period of the first 12 hours of an incident that can sometimes be borne by the local agency, but in many cases, when the incidents get this big, that they cover everything. So, there, there shouldn't be much in terms of mutual aid costs, if any, for, for, on the fire side.
Similar on fire?
So, I would believe it's going to be very similar on the county side, and I, I do want to say that the county's still working hard. And the city's back to, you know, to normal, so to speak, and people are back in businesses. But the county is still very much kind of in flux, and they haven't even had a chance to lift their head up off the table to really think about this. But most, if not all, of the mutual aid assets that were requested to come down to the city of Sonoma were requested through the county EOC. They may have reported here because it was more convenient for them coming out of the Bay Area. So, the intent is to, take a deep breath when we get everybody back in their homes, and we can sit down with the county, put all that paperwork together, and figure out exactly what would be the most appropriate and equitable way of doing it. So, that's kind of where we're at.
And I, you know, the, I guess, the, as one thing I want to be clear to council, the $500,000 really is like this. It's kind of just to set a fund aside, and then we'll see, and we'll come back and update you as we move forward. Again, we, in terms of, there are, you know, like the evacuation center, there are definitely costs for them, the school district, et cetera. Hopefully, that those will run through the county, and we will not have to pay them back and take care of that piece. But there's just, we've not been able to make contact with county finance folks yet to kind of talk through these things as, so really, what I, the purpose of this is to basically take these things, set these funds up, and be ready, and then wait and see what happens.
Well, I guess my fundamental question is, why would we allocate the funds before we've even been billed? I mean, if it was our own city staff that we had to pay overtime to, I understand, under the wage and hour laws, we have to pay them, but for people who haven't billed us and we don't know what the expenses are, it sounds to me, and I know it's not intended this way, but a lot like a blank check, and I don't understand why we can't have at least a comprehensive estimate of what the cost would be, how they are formulated, when you decide overtime between what happened in Sonoma, what happened outside the city of Sonoma, how that's going to be done, some kind of fiduciary responsibility, which I think this council has. This report doesn't contain that. And so, I'm trying to understand, I, I don't understand the urgency, since you don't even know what the bills are yet, when we can have a meeting, we have a meeting every two weeks, and we can have an emergency meeting in short order, why wouldn't we just estimate the cost first instead of just giving the money first?
So, part of, part of this is, and we will, we do have payroll costs that, again, we want to start to fund out and pay appropriately and pull them out of our general process so it's clear that these were fire-related costs versus general costs. So, we will have those costs for both police and fire. And so, part of the goal is to segment those costs as soon as we can to make them clear. Again, I do not see that we're going to have bills right away, but what, part of what we're trying to do was create a structure that we're ready when some of those come. And I'm happy as we go forward in this process and have a better sense, it would be my intent to make sure the council is well-aware of what we're doing. I do not mean this to be a blank check and by any means, and I'm sorry if it appears that way. I'm trying to really set up a structure, and I don't want to just say, let's pay bills out of the emergency reserve. I feel like we should set a fund aside that is specifically for this so that we can start billing to that, segment those funds, and kind of be ready as things come through, and we can provide council, you know, with better updates as, as we move forward.
Question by Mr. Edwards.
So, Kathy, my sense would be that there'd be some finance professionals that you would need to bring in that would help manage this and help recoup those dollars that are going to ultimately be due to the city or reimburse. Is, is that the case? Are we going to, I mean, I, I see that those dollars being where we, we have X out there, we know we're going to have X costs, but we're going to also hire the professionals to help recoup the most that we can.
Yes. We've put out questions through this kind of listservs through the finance world, the folks that work with cities, to look for folks that have some experience in this area to come in and help our finance team, collect these costs, look at it. I mean, the forms, et cetera, that need to be filled out with the state and federal agencies. That is a cost that we will incur, and we'll want those, those folks on, you know, and sooner than later, so we can help with that as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Cook?
And you were talking about updating the council. Do you have timing that you, you would think that the council would be notified to do an audit on, on what's going on?
Well, you know, in terms of, once the emergence, this emergency piece overall is lifted, lifted, I see what we would potentially do is be bringing a list of, there are smaller items, and in terms of my authority as a manager, according to purchasing, I can, I can do professional service contracts, those types of things for $25,000. Anything else, I think we're going to, those costs, anything higher would need to be coming back to the council, and you would need to be approving that. So, we haven't gotten that level of detail, whether we're bringing you a list of, here's some of the pieces and the expenses, and how that's going to work. But it would be my intention of making sure that you're well-aware of what are the costs moving forward. Again, the majority of the costs that we can hopefully shift to the county, we would want to do this.
Thank you.
Any additional questions at this time? All right. I'm, at this point, I will bring it out to the public for public comment, same rules as before. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and I look forward to hearing what you have to say. Who's first?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Johnny Westham. I'm with the Sonoma Valley Visitors Bureau, and it's nice to see everybody together. And I'm going to echo some of the sentiments from earlier. You guys did a wonderful job. Kathy, your staff did a wonderful job, and I talked to a number of city council last week, and thank you for your leadership. It was excellent, and I felt confident the entire time as a resident of the, of the greater valley. But just know that we saw what you did, and thank you. As far as the events are concerned, I think that's point number three. We're continuing to pursue the lighting of the Plaza Ceremony on November 18th. Traditionally, that event has been the kickstart of our holiday campaign, where we do a performance and those types of things in front of City Hall, and it would be a big celebration. We've had conversations with the vendors and growers, with the city, with the Chamber of Commerce, and we're looking at how we can alter that event this year to accommodate more of a, not a celebration, but an acknowledgement of first responders, what they've done for our community, maybe partnering with the, with the city on some ancillary events that surround the lighting of the Plaza. So, the lighting of the Plaza will continue to move forward, just with a different tone, this respectful to the community, respectful to the residents, respectful to the city, the efforts that our first responders have done. And we'll continue to work with Kathy and the staff on that, and I'm sure after this meeting, it sounds like we'll maybe have some liaisons from the council to work with, and we welcome that opportunity. We're here to be a committed community partner of yours, and we'll do what we can to make this the best community and, and to rebound. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Norma Barnett. Am I supposed to spell my last name? B-A-R-N-E-T-T. First of all, of course, like everybody in this room, I'm deeply grateful to all the people who protected all of us in our homes in the city of Sonoma and in the county. I was comfortable in a friend's home in San Francisco, nervous but comfortable because I have two homes that I almost lost. And, but I have returned with an interest in contributing to the community's rebuilding and recovering from this fire. So, I have a number of comments to make. I'm specifically working and concerned about the issue of housing, and I'm working with a group called the Sonoma Valley Housing Group, which is a coalition of members of the community. First of all, I have a question, which is a version, I think, of Amy's question about why this money is being earmarked before, not so much the discussion of actual expenses, which can be perhaps anticipated, but priorities. What are the priorities? It's also a spin-off from Georgia, Kelly's comment about what kind of community do we want to be going forward because we have an opportunity to make some different kinds of decisions here than we make just in the ordinary course of business. And there have not been discussions about major priorities like housing. Housing has been a huge problem in the community in the valley, even before the fire, and it's aggravated by the fire, perhaps not by the people who have the money to live in the city, but the workers who work for the businesses and contribute to the schools and all, many of the other activities of life here in the community. So, that's, that's one example, of course, that I'm particularly concerned about. But the discussion of priorities should happen before the allocation of the money. And also, I'm not particularly concerned about businesses who seem to be very well-funded, very active, and very well-supported by the Tourism Improvement District. I have not heard nearly as much about the needs of ordinary people who were hurt by this fire, and what is being done for them, and how this, how the city is going to be contributing to that, particularly in the area of housing, but I'm sure that there are other areas do. So, I would like to see the council take very seriously the, and there's been a lot of, I've got 15 seconds, but there's been a lot of talk about working with the larger Sonoma Valley, that not just isolating our needs of the city of Sonoma, but working in concert with a larger group. And that means thinking about the people in the Springs and in the whole community and what they need right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Dave Ransom. I live in Santa Rosa. I go to church in Sonoma. I have a lot of friends in Sonoma. I have more friends here than I do in Santa Rosa. Sonoma and the Springs, it, you know, our church is a church of the Sonoma Valley. It's not a church of the city, even though it's in the city, and it's, we, we take the valley as a whole in, into, into account, and I think it's very important for the council to do that. We had a meeting on Sunday, and one of the people said, I can't, I'm not going to go to talk to the Board of Supervisors. I don't live in the, in the city, but I'm going to come and talk to the city council. So, you really are looked at as the government of the area, and your leadership is important in that, in that effect. I, I think it's important to understand, because I know the economy is one of the things you're talking about, what the economy means to an awful lot of people here, and that is two weeks' lost work and rent coming up, and nothing, nothing to fall back on to pay that. That, yes, the house is still there, even though the landlord may be thinking about upping the rent, using this excuse to get you all out if you don't hit, if you don't pay that rent. It is very important. I mean, just like my, my cleaner who says, okay, you know, maybe I'll move to New Jersey. My, my wife's family is in New Jersey. If, if, if we're going to keep, put this community, a community back together again, it's not just getting the folks back in, which is a wonderful thing, but get, keeping them in, and that's going to take some, some, some money. The kind of money that Fish hands out, the guy who hands out the money for, for rent at, for Fish is in our, in our congregation, and he tells story after story. I'm sure he's going to have a whole bunch after this, after this time. I know that the state, state, the governor's state of emergency statement requires now that, that there be no rent gouging. It is now a criminal offense to raise rents in the next 30 days over 10% in the whole state, because it, that's, the state understands that this is not a local question, it's a state question. And that 30, 30 days is renewable to 180 days. And one of the, one of the people in church told me yesterday that, no, that's the federal, the federal is even stronger, so, so that's going to be important. And that 30 days can be renewed locally. You can do it. The Board of Supervisors can do it. Finally, I think that, that we're going to have to figure out, okay, how are we going to be able to police this, this anti-rent gouging stuff? There's a lot of stuff on the books that is going to be very good to, to have in place, but it only makes sense if the people know it and the landlords and others observe it. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, a meeting can't go by without me saying something. Linda Carrato, First Street East. And my issue is on the housing also, I've been before you many times about housing, and I agree with Dave Ransom, I think you need a faction as a watchdog. California tenant law is very clear about how much you can raise a rent regardless of if it's a disaster or not, and how many times you can do it, unless there's a tenant landlord agreement to do so. So somebody needs to be overseeing this and watching it and protecting our residents, because it is happening, and I've seen it firsthand, so it is happening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Fred Alabach, 195508, Street East. And I wasn't here to witness the great service of the city staff and the emergency response personnel here, but I did go to Marin County, and Marin County was great. I went to Lawson's Landing, and those people had it covered totally, so I think that this is a regional expression of competence and goodwill, and so I was very thankful for the people in Marin County, particularly Marin Fire, who's a Cal Fire contract with Marin County, and particularly Mike Sebold, who's just incredibly competent fireman there. I was very impressed with him and the people at Lawson's Landing. So we have a good community, there's some really good communities all around here, and I got to be the beneficiary of that while you all are working hard here to be the great community that we are. I would like to encourage you to have a subcommittee on housing, and take advantage of this moment now that people are aware of the acute housing needs, can also then focus on the chronic housing needs that have preceded those, and to have a subcommittee where you would maybe take advantage of the goodwill and the funds and the spirit that's available now to maybe do something special and extra for particular, just one idea that I had, is that you could raise the inclusionary rate for housing development projects here in Sonoma that are in the pipeline that haven't been entitled yet, raise that inclusionary rate to 35%, and then go with the guy from Burbank Housing who had an article on the PD about suggesting that there could be cooperation with market rate developers and nonprofit developers to make up the cost of that 35%, the 15% difference between our 20% and that 35%. So that would address some of the area median income housing, the area median income population here that have been very affected by the chronic housing and the acute housing crisis. So I would like to encourage you to do that, and that's all I have to say for right now. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Larry Barnett, 637 Fifth Street East. The fire we just had is what an economist in economic terms would refer to as a black swan event. Black swan event is when there is a unanticipated transformation of the economy for a certain period of time, and because they are unanticipated, the effect is quite dramatic. And what we've just had here is a black swan event, nobody necessarily could have predicted this would happen when it did, the way it did. From the standpoint of the city's response to it, I think the previous speakers have talked about setting priorities, I think that's extremely important. I'm going to take a moment and be critical of the city of Sonoma, despite all my feelings of pride and how well we've done through this event, and it's in the area of housing, which other people are talking about. My opinion is, the city of Sonoma has squandered its opportunity to build up a fund to support affordable housing, which could have been used for exactly this kind of event. You could have raised the TOT years ago, you could have put the Nexus Fund Study at the top of the list and gotten it done, you could have started to generate funds from transfer fees, you could have done so many things over these last years since the Redevelopment Agency was eliminated in 2012, and frankly, the city of Sonoma has done nothing. And I am really discouraged, and I'm really disappointed. Now, all of a sudden, you're going to go through this process, oh, we've got to get money and help people with some of the housing problems, so you're going to use the emergency reserves, which are not traditionally used for housing purposes. You could have had a housing fund, but you blew the opportunity, and I am critical of the city of Sonoma and its leadership for that. I've been harping on this for years, and I'm not getting any traction, and I don't really know what to do about it. The Nexus Study, for example, what has happened to the Nexus Study? Insofar as tourism and visitors and all the rest, as far as I'm concerned, the city should not be spending a dime of the taxpayers' money on promoting tourism to Sonoma right now. You have a Tourism Improvement District, which this year is going to have $750,000 to spend. As far as I'm concerned, the TID ought to be taking some of that money, buying up the empty rooms in the hotels in terms of paying for rooms for people who've been dislocated and out of their homes during the winter, which is the slower season at these properties anyway. Let them put some of that money back into providing some temporary housing for people until they get settled. There's an opportunity for creativity here for the various parties all sit down together and talk about what can really be done. The last thing I'll say is, until you know what the financial condition of the city is and have a full and complete audited financial statement in front of you, I would be ultra-cautious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Petlock, 426 Napa Road, Sonoma. First rule of good financial controllership is money in fast and out slow. Here, it seems like a pretty big move, moving $600,000 out of reserves into an account to spend as the bills come in, but right now, it doesn't even seem like we know what those bills are, what we should be paying for, and so on. I think in most circumstances, that would be fine if we had good visibility and good reporting coming out of the city, but we just don't. We don't know what we're spending our money on, we don't know how it's just coming in and coming out, and I don't mean staff, I'm sure they're on top of it, but the rest of us, we have no feel for this. So I think, you know, as a taxpayer, as a citizen in the city, I think, you know, we have a lot of work to do to make us feel more comfortable about how money is allocated and spent in the city, and, you know, just kind of comments from staff there, it doesn't even seem like they really know in this situation where that money should go, so I think we've got to be really careful. On that note, you know, the citizens of Sonoma have put together a petition to ask the city to come forward with financial reporting, present what's going on in the city, we want to know. We also want accountability for when things aren't done properly. So I'm going to present that to the clerk tonight, and I hope to get some action on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to bring it back. So we have a few things to talk about, and we're going to start with, all right, on our list, numbers one and two that are discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding money out of our emergency reserve fund, one is for the disaster response fund, and one is for the disaster recovery fund. And we're just going to stick to that, and then at the very end, we're going to act on everything in pieces, but we're just going to talk about it in pieces so we keep our facts straight. So who would like to get us started on this piece? Ms. Harrington?
So my comments are, I'm not going to support either of these items tonight. I don't think, I have two concerns, it's not that we won't spend the money ultimately, but my two concerns are, one, I agree that we, as a council, have never seen a financial statement that shows the accurate representation of the revenues or the expenses, and I think that in my professional life, I represent fiduciaries, that's what I do, I'm a probate attorney, and it would not, I would never advise a fiduciary to agree to spend money out of reserves when they don't have verified financial information, and I don't think we've ever seen that, and I don't think that's the fault of the staff, but that's the position we're in, which is, we don't actually know, we don't actually have the detail on the finances that I think is appropriate, so making large expenditures in that context makes me very uncomfortable. Number two, in reviewing these items, and then just in the brief discussion that we had, you know, about one item, which is the mutual aid, it's clear that there aren't pressing bills where we're going to develop a bad reputation for not paying our bills on time, it's not clear to me why even a preliminary estimate of these items couldn't be put before the council prior to allocating the amount. I can't understand, based on the amount of information available, how the number of $500,000 was derived, I think that's relevant, I would expect to see next to each one of these bullet points, a certain amount that was estimated for that, we don't have that. And I understand that staff wants to move forward in an abundance of caution, but since we already have, we already have the money set aside, it's in our reserve fund, we don't have to come up with it, we don't have to set it aside somewhere else, so I am not understanding, it doesn't make sense to me that you want to set it into a different fund until the bills come in. It's already in an emergency fund, and when the bills come in, you can get at least an idea of what they are, and then we can carry out our fiduciary duties. And anything other than that, I think, is just ceding our fiduciary duties to the city staff, which I don't want to do. On the $100,000, which is essentially discretionary, I also don't see why, it doesn't have to be a completely detailed plan, but a somewhat detailed plan of how those funds are going to be spent couldn't come back to the council. We want to spend $100,000, $40,000 of it will be for a city appreciation party, $10,000 of it will be for a website, you know, some ballpark, I think that is much closer to the standard of fiduciary duty, other than just allocating the funds with no plan, and I don't think it's urgent, because we can have a city council meeting at any time to, if there was an urgency, and also, we have a standing meeting every other week, and so I would agree that just based on the level of financial reporting to this city council in general, I don't have confidence that when the bills are paid, we will be informed in a timely fashion of what has been paid, so I'm not going to support either of those.
We're going to go over here to Mr. Cook, and then to Ms. Edwards.
And I'll concur with Councilmember Harrington, I do believe it'd be put in the cart before the horse, but in no way is that a show of distrust to city staff. I think city staff did an excellent job during this fire, I was very pleased. I've been on the council for five years, we've had an earthquake that happened in Napa, and I remember how that looked, and how the city staff responded. This was 100 times more than that was. But I do believe that pretty much what Councilmember Harrington said, I think this is a time to slow down, take a look at it. I look at the city council as board of directors of a large corporation, about $32 million worth, and then you look at our general budget at $18,000, and you take a half a million dollars, start doing percentages, and that's not even counting the other $100,000, I would like to have council talk about it as that goes, so I won't be supporting either resolution.
Mr. Edwards?
So I guess I'm on the opposite side again. Something that I look at is having capacity to act. So if we have this situation where we don't, this is the first time this kind of event has happened for anybody in Sonoma County, or Napa, or anybody affected in North Bay. And for me, the reason why we have a contingency fund, or an emergency fund, is for emergency, and that's what we're in. And from what I'm reading and what I'm seeing is that we're just going to be able to have the capacity, if you have the cash to be able to take care of something, I think that's very important. And I think with the, what I spoke about earlier, is the opportunity to have the right personnel to recoup, rather than going through a process where you have to go out and you have to get permission to find those people that are going to help recoup, we might end up getting a bigger percentage back, and go back and have $3 million in our fund later, because we were able to use these dollars to secure the opportunity to go out and find those right individuals, or work on gathering this money back from FEMA. I mean, I read the stories about all the other disasters and so on and so forth, and this is our first real disaster in Sonoma County. And I believe it makes sense to be able to give the staff, I mean, we hired this staff, we're responsible for the staff. I remember, and all due respect to Larry, he used to give the whole community a hard time, because nobody would ever show up for a budget meeting. There would never be anybody in the audience for a budget meeting, and I've seen that for years and years and years at city councils. So I have faith in the staff, I watched from the get-go at 5:00 in the morning on Monday, how the staff operated, and the care and dignity they've held, and I respect, you know, the $100,000 for a celebration, I think there's going to be plenty of celebration that's going to happen, and I don't, I think that can happen organically, and I think we'll have that anyway. I'm more inclined to go with the folks that, the high school event, and that's good enough for me, because I don't, I'm not looking to have a big celebration, and I've spoken to hundreds of first responders during these last two weeks. I actually just went back to work today, because I've been busy the entire time, contributing my time to the community. And as far as the housing goes, we're in discussions with, through Rotary and otherwise, and my goal is to start, the work that I'd like to be doing is getting shovels in the ground on the projects that are in the pipeline. I mean, we have apartments, we have rental projects that are coming forward, and I think that's, that makes a lot of sense, but I don't want to be tying up all of our discussions about, well, we don't, we're not sure what the staff is doing with the money. I have full confidence in our staff, I just do, and that's the way I just operate in business, is that when I have confidence in staff, then I go with that, and I watch it, and just the argument, we have a meeting every other week, we can also change it as well, we can pull it back in a meeting over the week. So that's my position on it, and I'm going to support it. And there we go.
Ms. Aggermonte?
Hi, well, oh, hi, thank you. I have to say that this morning I received a call from a former colleague, because I reached out to him, Mayor Jim Ruane from the city of San Bruno, if all of you remember what happened to that city, and he has offered assistance to our city, in fact, his city manager as well, because they've been through this, they understand this, and the first, one of the things he said to me was, relax, you just have to relax. And other things that we discuss with respect to the chamber and the Visitors Bureau is, if they've got a plan, they need to present it to the council, so we can understand exactly what might be on their plans, and that really is real money. I've heard some things this evening with respect, and he also said, much of this is going to be reimbursed, which I'm, you know, I'm very happy about. Here is my problem, and I'm sorry to bring up old wounds, but you know, I've been talking about reserves for a long time, and I hear people out there talking about housing opportu, this is, we have a housing opportunities and strategies reserve, it's only $50,000, so what are we going to do with that money? We can't do anything with that money. I ask about legal aid being here, coming here to help, that might be something that can resolve some of these issues. I don't even know if that 1.2, I think we're looking at the emergency operation reserve, 2.8 million, I don't know. I know they talked about 17%, I don't know, we never discussed the reserves, and in fact, I didn't vote to accept this budget for those very reasons. So I do not support this, I know that, you know, the dust is going to settle, and all of these things are going to happen, and I would suggest we take a look at what the city of San Bruno did, they dealt with Cal Fire, they dealt with the state, they dealt with FEMA, all the different agencies. So I'm a kind of a person that doesn't like to reinvent a wheel, so I'm just sharing that information with the staff here. You know, as I said, I cannot support this, this feels, there's no bills. I'm married to a gentleman that if I said, well, forget it, he would never accept something like this, and I'm a grown-up, I would never put money out where I didn't know how much it cost. And I'm sure this is just a cushion. And I'm sure this is just a cushion, and I think what Gary said may, you know, you have the capacity to pay it. But, um, no, this is not how I feel. I've been angry about the reserves. If we're gonna put money in, it should be somewhere into emergency housing. I don't know what that might mean. Maybe, uh, I don't know, first and last month, any of those things, if this money can be used for that. But I certainly do not, um, support this, one and two. And I, what I do support, we do have an audit committee, and I suggest we use them as an oversight committee as these funds are spent. That's what the city council is for. We don't need staff, and we don't need specialists to do that. These people are all business people. They understand numbers, and I trust them in their judgment. Thank you.
Uh, well, this is something that I would support for different reasons for both. Uh, just in the way, in a budget, when we allocate what the annual budget's gonna be, we don't make the staff come to us every time they want to pull money out of the allocated part of that budget. I think if there's concerns about oversight, then, uh, it would be very possible for us to get real-time updates as to what the transfers are in and out of this, and at the end, have a very clear record of what that fund, uh, did during this process. And I also see why you would wanna segregate it and put it in a separate fund, because you don't wanna be pulling tiny little pieces out of your 2.8 million dollar emergency fund. I mean, your, like, bank records would just be chaos. So you put aside, you take what you do out, you put it back in, and then we, then you figure out how to not only put that back into the reserve, but also make it complete, uh, whether it's from other reserves. I just think that that's good budgeting practices. I don't know about everybody else, but I have, I have meetings scheduled every day this week. I feel like I've had meetings scheduled every day for the past two weeks related to all of this, and I don't really think that this is something that requires all of us getting together to have a meeting, and it requires everyone on the staff to spend their time to be here for it. So I think that it's, it's micromanaging. I know that there's the, uh, with, with the finance department, I know that there have been a lot of positive, uh, steps made, and some of the things that, uh, we are not talking about today were related to the budget from the fif-, from 2015, 2016, uh, which had not been closed out. And so I see a lot of positive movement, I see a lot of, of, uh, good help coming in in a more supported finance department, and I'm very comfortable in the direction that it was all going. And, uh, related to other issues that's been raised, I think that we'll, um, (sigh) that we'll be getting, uh, you know, more confident as a community in, uh, how our finances are. I think this city just had a tradition, um, when it was a smaller city, of operating and keep accounting a certain way, and I think now we require more specificity, and that's the way that we're gonna be running. So for this, I would support the half a million. I think the staff has done a great job in the last two weeks with this crisis, and I think that they would continue to do good work, uh, with this part of it. And the $100,000 fund for the appreciation event, as far as who would decide how that's spent, we're gonna talk about putting a subcommittee together, so that's gonna be made up of council members, and until they decide what they wanna do, how are we gonna know what they want? And so at this point, after they figure out what they want, we're gonna have to meet again, so we can pull money out of the reserve to do this. So I just find all of this incredibly inefficient, and there's just so many other things to talk about. And all of this, um, if there are questions about how it's spent, I think that that could be very easily alleviated with, um, reports as the funds are used. So unless there's any more comments on this part of it, we will move to... Uh, so, the middle piece here, we had some areas highlighted where the city, uh, could have some participation, either in forming subcommittees or in appointing liaisons. Uh, there's lots of moving pieces happening very quickly. And so the areas that were identified, we have our appreciation events, um, that could be good for a subcommittee, uh, there's lots of fundraising things, and even though, you know, the city's not a direct part of that, uh, you know, just for staying up to date with what the community is doing, because there is a lot of money moving around, um, it could be helpful to have a point of lai-, liaison for that, to report back to us. Um, as far as the economic piece, even though we didn't have any direct damage in the city, um, we're already seeing the economic effects with, uh, businesses already having to consider layoffs, we've had business owners that have lost their homes, um, so perhaps a subcommittee for that. Um, the environment, I know that that's starting to get moving, and there's a meeting on Friday related to that, and I think that it would be good if we kept up with those efforts. And then housing, as people have expressed, is on everyone's mind, and, uh, we could either do a subcommittee or a liaison. So I was thinking that we could, um, however order we want, uh, talk about if there's any sort of pressing ideas you have for these, or if there's a category that you're interested in, or a role that you are interested in doing, then we could just talk about it, and then at the end, we can see how it all fits together, and whether we need to fill some spots that aren't. So who would like to get us started? Mr. Cook?
Well, I think it's a great idea to have subcommittees or a liaison, um, depending on what it is. Uh, I would be interested in, um, in the environment. Um, I do stand on the ag and open space, and even though the city of Sonoma was not affected, um, within our jurisdiction, um, but if you go up to the north area, where the, above the cemetery, there is, but I think the liaison for that part would be good, um, more or less, because I think it was evident during the fire that, um, we are Sonoma Valley. I mean, I'm a city council member from Sonoma, but I've always felt that I am helping serve the Springs area all the way down to what I call Sonoma Valley. So I would, I would like to be, um, a liaison for that, if we decide to go that direction.
All right. Who's next? Mr. Edwards?
So, um, we're already, or I'm already working on probably a little bit of each of these, so I'll be happy to take whatever's left over. Um, but it's, I'm gonna continue to do the work that I do otherwise, and I'll be involved in, to some degree, not as maybe the direct representative, but I'm already working on housing, working with some folks on moving that forward, and I'll be available for whatever's you guys decide not to take.
Thank you. Ms. Harrington?
Uh, Councilmember Agramonte and I met with Lisa Jansen, uh, earlier this week to pr-, to discuss preliminarily a, um, an appreciation ceremony. I'm happy to continue working on that, or not. Um, I'm also glad to work on the housing issue, so whatever people prefer, those are my two interests.
All right. Ms. Agramonte?
Well, I'm not, I'm concerned about all the fundraising that's going on, because I don't know if they're legitimate fundraisers, who they're, who the money's going to, so I personally, with fundraising in my background, I would like to see if this is actually legitimate, it is, if it's actually going to the people it's going to help, it's supposed to help, and what percentage goes to administration. Those are just the three little questions everybody should ask. That includes a lot of the ones that are online. I'm concerned about that, because I think, uh, we have a very sympathetic issue going on here, so I bet people are very generous, and, um, so I would be interested in that.
Thank you. And I, um, I've already had a couple meetings with, uh, the chamber and other groups, and I've been on the, what is it called now, Business and Economic Development Steering Committee for the last several years. So I'd be interested in being on the subcommittee related to the economy, and, um, also, if we do go the subcommittee route for housing, then I would love to join Ms. Harrington, or if we just do a liaison, you can have it. So that, um, the two potentially, or one potentially open spot would be the other seat of the appreciation subcommittee, and would Ms. Agramonte be interested?
Is that what we're doing, Amy, as part of the?
The event?
That's what we did, yeah.
Would, would you be interested in working on it further?
Uh, with the, yeah, I guess, we seem to start that, so...
All right. And would anybody, uh, be interested in being on a subcommittee related to the economy with me? Perhaps Mr. Cook?
Yeah, I would like to do that.
Thank you. And, wait. I, uh... So at this point, I'll tell you what I have, and, uh, you can tell me if you wanna shift anything. For our appreciation slash event subcommittee, and, uh, just even having some initial brainstorming of all the, all the people we have to thank, all the groups, um, the opportunity to bring the community together in the spirit of gratitude, and then also, you know, sending formal thank-yous to, uh, everyone from elected leaders to, uh, first responder agencies, uh, it's a pretty big list. But I have eight, uh, Ms. Harrington and Ms. Agramonte. Uh, for fundraising liaison, I have Ms. Agramonte. For our, uh, subcommittee related to, uh, our economic impacts, I have myself and Mr. Cook. For the environment, uh, for liaison, I have Mr. Cook. And for a housing subcommittee, I have Ms. Harrington and myself. But, um, I'd be willing to give up my seat to Mr. Edwards, but you just tell me what you would like, or we can let you just be a free agent.
I'll take them in.
Yeah?
But can I suggest a category that I think Councilmember Edwards, uh, already does quite well, so perhaps it doesn't need to be, uh, you know, called out specifically, but I think, um, Vice Mayor, Mayor Edwards has one of the best grasps on the, um, uh, on the nonprofits in our area, and how they're working together, and what they are doing for people, and who's playing what role, and connecting us with all of those nonprofits. And I, I don't know if you want that to be a formal role, you're kind of, you're already doing that role, but that's sort of not mentioned, but...
We can make it formal if you want.
Yeah, I see, um, 'cause we have fundraising, but there's also the non-monetary contributions and efforts of lots of different organizations, and it would just be nice if there was somebody sort of keeping tabs that could let all of us know all those things, 'cause it would be helpful for us in guiding people to support. I think that's a great idea.
And I was also thinking, if they need contact with the city so that we can play a role with the nonprofits, then we, you know, we'll be having a representative doing that work.
All right, I have a list here. Uh, are there any other, uh, thoughts for discussion on this section? Seeing none. The next would be, uh, the matter related to the, uh, declaration of the state of emergency. Um, we have, uh, I guess we could, with a four-fifth vote, uh, end it today, or we could direct it to be placed on the agenda for November 6th, to be closed at that point. And are there any comments from the staff table before we get into this one?
Yeah, I think at the time we wrote the, again, when we put everything together to put the staff report out, at that point, we still had mutual aid, folks were still kind of coming back in, and, um, you know, a conversation with the chief today, um, you know, we have stopped that law enforcement mutual aid. Uh, there's been a lot of moving parts, as council's aware, so, uh, I just have not wanted to kind of pull the plug on that, in case there was some reason we should keep it. But there, we also have that tension that we should stop the proclamation as soon as we don't need it anymore. Um, I think the mutual aid was one of the key reasons to keep it over the last, you know, since we stopped the EOC. Um, and, um, unless either the chief have a different perspective, and I would look towards them for any feedback, um, if council wanted to move forward and lift it tonight, um, I think, again, that is, was one of the key pieces of maintaining it. Um, our, our community feels very different today than it did Friday, when we were putting this together. Um, you know, the folks were coming back in town, things were busy downtown, folks were shopping and eating and coming together, and so our community was repopulating, and it definitely has a very different feel than it did when we were putting all this together on Thursday and Friday. So I would ask, um, Chief Sackett and Chief Aker, if they have any concerns about lifting the proclamation, um, but at this point, with law enforcement mutual aid being done, I think that it was the key piece to contain, keep it going at that point. I think the only other thing is Chief Sackett speaking about maybe upcoming concerns with water, I mean, sorry, with the, um, winds and dry conditions, um, so would look for any comments from either of them.
Anything from the chief's section?
Thank you. Um, I don't have any specific concerns as far as either lifting or maintaining that declaration right now. Um, you know, yeah, we are expecting another wind event, um, you know, hotter, drier conditions, but our participation with the master mutual aid agreement throughout the state and the resources that we have currently in the county, um, I'm confident that, you know, we will, we have and will get any additional help that we need, um, regardless of whether we have the declaration in place or not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Cook?
I would rather, um, keep it in place until we have more information. Uh, I just, I just believe that, um, if we have to, if we have to have a special meeting in the next couple of days, it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't be, uh, that huge of a, a deal. I would, I would just want to make sure that we were doing the right thing, and I don't have information saying otherwise.
Any other thoughts, Ms. Harrington?
What is staff's recommendation now?
You know, this is a situation that we as staff are not in regularly, um, so if I, looking back through what powers we have and have been using, um, mutual aid is the key item that's listed on that. Um, and so at this point, um, also, there still exists the state emergency, the county, which I believe provides some coverage. Uh, so, you know, I think at this point, um, if the mutual aid law is done, if council wanted to lift it, um, if I've not had the chances, Councilmember Agramonte talked about, you know, talking to some other cities that have gone through this, um, to understand, oh, I wish we would've kept it a little longer. I don't have, we've not been able to do some of that research yet, just that it has been so busy since, over this last week. So if you wanted to continue it a little longer, let us make sure to talk to some folks that have been through this experience, and then if we need to do a quick meeting, um, some point next week, or enclose it before our next meeting of November 6th, that's also another option. But that's my, that's been my hesitancy. I mean, again, this is not something we all go through every day, um, especially this type of duration. Um, I believe, for the most part, with the mutual aid being done, that is really the, the area that we have utilized over the last five days. Um, and with that being done with law, we're probably, we're probably fine releasing tonight. But again, I would, in abundance of caution, it might be better just to wait and come back for a quick meeting next week.
Mr. Edwards?
Quick question, Kathy, it doesn't cost us anything?
It, it does not, and I should just confirm to the council, it's, you know, in terms of, uh, we are not out expending or doing things above nor, any kind of normal situation. So, uh, it's, there's not, while the emergency declaration may give us additional powers, that those things are not being utilized.
And the fact that this, this firestorm happened as quickly as it did, I'm with, uh, Councilmember Cook, I'm, if it doesn't hurt, let's keep it, and if we need it over these wind events over the next few days, I'm, I'd rather have the caution than, than not, than have to restart it all again. Thank you.
And I'm okay keeping it.
And I agree, even though it sounds like we probably could lift it, I don't think that probably could is enough, uh, strong enough for me, so I imagine we, so I guess, otherwise, we'd give direction to lift it on the November 6th unless something changes, but also could, if anything happened between now and then that invoked some sort of process under that, could we know about?
I would be, I would be informing council, yes.
Thank you. And the last on the list, uh, other items related to response or recovery. Are there any other things that anyone would wanna bring up tonight that we have not talked about so far? Seeing none. So at this point, we need to take some actions. Um, a, uh, going back to the two, uh, resolutions that were proposed, transferring money from the emergency reserves, um, before someone makes a motion, just wanted to put out the option of, uh, transferring a lesser amount for, uh, because we know that there are, a bill's gonna be due, but, um, I'll leave it to the majority on that one.
I would also maybe just offer another, um, excuse me, Councilmember Agramonte, one of you first?
The same rules apply, however. If it was 250, the same rules apply, and I, I understand that's negotiable, but I, I don't even know what's out, I don't even know what this is, and I'm sorry, I couldn't support that. I can't speak, obviously.
Yeah, and I can continue not to support, and I would say that, uh, in the budget, we always have line items. This one- This one, I would like to see the line items, and I believe that that'll be coming forth at a later date.
All right. So, if someone would like to make a motion, or do we, if we're saying no, do we still need to make a negative action?
Yes, I'd recommend a motion be made to adopt this resolution, see if it garners a second, and then take a vote.
Mr. Edwards, would you like to make this?
Yeah, I'll move to adopt this resolution. Do you want me to read it?
Do you want us to do the whole thing?
No, we'll call it the $500,000 resolution.
The $500,000 resolution.
I will second that. Madam Clerk, can I roll call vote, please?
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
May, Councilmember Cook?
No.
Councilmember Agramonte?
No.
Councilmember Harrington?
No.
Mayor Hundley?
Yes. And we have a motion on the emergency, or the disaster recovery fund, $100,000.
So move for the $100,000.
I will second that. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
No.
Councilmember Harrington?
No.
Councilmember Agramonte?
No.
Mayor Hundley?
Yes. Next, for our list of liaisons and subcommittees, do we need to take action to officially establish those?
Yes, please do that.
All right. Do I have a motion on our subcommittees and liaisons?
So moved.
Is that good enough?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Can I roll call vote, please?
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Agramonte?
Aye.
Mayor Hundley?
Aye. And finally, as far, so direction to staff to, agenda is lifting the emergency declaration at our November 6th meeting. Are there any motions on this topic?
I'll make a motion that we direct staff to lift it on November 6th.
Second? Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Agramonte?
Aye.
Mayor Hundley?
Aye. Any other loose sentence that could be useful while we're all up here? Item seven is council members' reports and comments. Do we have any reports or comments? Mr. Cook?
I had a GSA meeting today at 4:00, and I had to leave for this council meeting, so I didn't, I didn't attend the last, probably 25 to 30 minutes of it. But it is moving forward. I don't really have anything to report out, except for, we're just still pretty much doing housekeeping. But if anybody would like to talk to me about the GSA, the groundwater, be sure to, you know, give me a call, because I think that now that the fire has happened, it's making this even more important. This is a state mandate that we have to come at a certain date to, to look at our groundwater, and I think that this fire situation is going to affect, you know, what's happening to the streams and, and everything else that really affects our groundwater in the end.
I would, oh, are you sure? I just wanted to take another opportunity to thank our staff and local chiefs, Chief Sackett and Chief Aker, and our city manager, Kathy Capriola, who had very, very long days for the last two weeks. Everyone worked really hard, and we have a very small but mighty staff, and they pulled it off. And, and to everyone else, I would just ask everyone to check on their neighbors. We have a very strong social fabric here, but I worry about the few people who might slip through, so check on your neighbors. Ms. City Manager?
No report, thank you.
All right. I lost it. Is there anything else on here?
I think that's it.
All right. With that, our meeting is adjourned.
Is there a final comment here?
There isn't. We, we dropped that like six months ago. I apologize, though.